Education. I have a quick question and probably it has to do with the Chromebook replacement. Is six hundred, six hundred the number typically that is replaced every year? Is that the normal cycle of replacement?
Yes.
It's a.
It's six hundred.
Yeah, they plan for two hundred for each class and that includes replacements and you know, things if they need some that break or need repairs, they order two hundred for each class. It's the same number they've used for a number of years.
Okay, and the increase is there's, that's just, there's no, there's no way around that.
Right, that's Google, Google increasing their rates from twenty-five to fifty dollars and then the price of the actual Chromebooks has gone up from initially around two hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars now.
Okay, and it said, this is a one-time fee that lasts the life of the device. For the management license, so if we replace the device, do we have to incur that again for new devices? This is, oh.
Yeah, each time you buy a new device.
Mm-hmm.
A new license.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions for the superintendent of schools tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this table that you sent us in your email correctly. The one forecasting a ten point six seven percent increase if we chose to supplant funds over the next two years.
Yeah, it was a, it was based on an assumption that.
Yep.
If we were to, yeah, go ahead. I don't want to answer the question, I'll let you ask it first.
All right, so this is, these are increases that we're going to see regardless, assuming we want to maintain the current level of services and programs at the school. It's just a matter of if we set ourselves up for a huge increase in the future at the cost to reduce costs today, right?
Correct, yep, exactly.
So in other words, these dollar figures increasing are inevitable, it's just we would offset things today at the price of tomorrow.
Right, they're in their estimates, you know, the best estimates we could come up with now. Last time I was here, I, I was kind of talking off the cuff based on some, some research we had done on what it would look like by further supplanting because we had spoken and shared that information with the board during one of our workshops. But in looking at it, based on everything we know now, given the number that was, you know, just kind of put out there as a, as a number, what that would look like would be a ten point six seven percent increase if we were to maintain all of our current services and supports. Actually not, that's not even completely accurate. Right now, we have a lot of additional staff that we're funding completely through the COVID grants, so that would be those, those, most of those positions going away, but just the other contractual increases and requirements included.
So this list assumes that you would be getting rid of the COVID positions when funds run out?
Yeah, the plan is to, we maintain some of that in there, you know, but we're looking to potentially remove other positions that can be reduced. You know, at the time, once we've kind of made it through the toughest parts of COVID recovery, which has been pretty challenging in all honesty, we'll reassess, decide, meeting with each principal starting in the summer as we always do, you know, what's going to be the most important things to maintain for our schools, what do we need most, what can we look at potentially reducing? And then come up with the best mix of personnel for the, the next budget cycle.
And do you have an idea which programs and positions specifically are affected by these grant funds?
Yes, well, all the staff that were listed on that other spreadsheet that I provided are grant funded by Esser Grants. There's a number of positions, I don't, I don't have it committed to memory, but.
Which other spreadsheet are you referring to?
The one from the last.
From the last meeting? Sorry, I have so many spreadsheets at this point.
I think this one, I don't know if you can even tell.
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
Oh, Jacob, if you could see this one.
Kind of like a half page. Just shows the.
Okay.
Funding used to. It's a number of pairs and tutors.
That was the twenty-five positions.
Monitors.
So mostly paraprofessional psychologists.
One psychologist, family school liaison, and, which has been incredibly useful and helpful and talented, first we hired. Resource teachers, instructional assistants, right, but a lot of pairs and tutors for the remediation of, of lost learning that happened despite our best efforts during COVID. Kids learning from all different places, different levels of support at home, some coming to school, some not coming to school, a lot of, a lot of issues that we're working to recover. So that's, we're hoping that at that point, in a couple of years when the grants are, are gone, we'll, there'll be a significantly lower need for any such supports and we'll, we're working really hard to recover so that we can then transition back to a more normal level of staffing once those grant funds are gone, all right?
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Any other questions? So in the information that you had sent us today, it speaks about supplanting a million dollars, which. Why did you use a million dollars?
Well, it was just kind of, it was the number you threw out there, I don't know if you were, I was hoping you were having, I was hoping you were joking, but at the last meeting, you know.
I did, but I said, I'm kidding, I didn't mean for you to reduce your budget a million dollars, specifically when I talked about the Esser money, it had to do with the, the substitute teachers and I asked why was there no Esser funding used to supplant that increase, which is like over ninety thousand dollars for next year. I certainly didn't expect you to reduce your spending by a million dollars, although.
All right.
No, no.
That's good.
No, and besides, if, if you used Esser money, it really wouldn't be reducing your expenditures, you would just be swapping it out, so if you really were going to reduce your expenditures by a million dollars, that would have a tremendous impact, right?
It sure would, it would change what we do, how we do it, how well we do it, and whether or not we could do what we do, so absolutely, so I'm glad to hear that. It was just a.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be sure that we're all speaking the same language here. I did not, that was certainly probably an ill-timed levity on my part, I certainly didn't expect you to reduce your budget by a million dollars or by using a million dollars worth of your Esser money to do that. I was really talking about the substitute teacher increase and why. As I went through your, your budget book, that was one of the areas where there was no supplemental reduction in that particular department, so just, just so we understand each other.
I appreciate it and I, I understand, and the subs did go up quite a bit, so I can understand why there'd be questions there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for getting the information about the Chromebooks because that's in your capital budget, so that was something I was not clear on and obviously, things are changing everywhere that we have no control over, so I appreciate that. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the superintendent or for Sam while they're here?
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
I do want to go back to the Chromebooks because you did mention.
Yep.
Is it possible, you know, or if it's possible to purchase these in advance, that you may be able to, you know, either save, it sounds like save some money.
Yes.
And I don't know, you know, we want to consider that, I mean, you know, we do have ARPA funds, which, you know, I know it mean we would be reshuffling things down the line, but I, I just thought a discussion about it would be a nice thing to have. You know, even if we just use an additional appropriation, I mean, if we can buy them for a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred and eighty, it does save thirty thousand dollars. It's not that. Or do you have any more specific information regarding that? I. I take it the price increase has already occurred?
Well, you know, from what, what Kevin shared, I'd have to look at it and see what the pricing would be, there may be some, some potential savings there, but. He, you know, because he wrote, we might be able to obtain Chromebooks in advance.
Yep.
Of some of the cost increases. I guess the increases are expected for next year, so if we were to pre-buy them, but we'd have to get more, a little more information, but no, I appreciate the.
No, I just, I wanted, you know, see if there was, did you have a comment?
Well, other than, I believe the school.
It looks like you want to talk.
Other than, they, they may be able to use Esser monies if they were to buy it, pre-buy it, not necessarily going to ARPA dollars on the town side.
Yep, yeah, I, okay. I probably should have said federal money as opposed to specifically ARPA dollars.
And I will say Kevin has just quoted the town computer purchases for this year, which the costs have gone up already and it's March, and there were some police computer purchases quoted too that, as of right now, have gone up higher than they were in the previous year, so. You know, I'm not sure that the cost increases Kevin's looking at for the Chromebooks, you know, are after July first or before July first, but there's going to be an increase one way or the other, is what I'm seeing already.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we carry on? Okay, I guess we're all set, thank you again for coming this evening and thank you for your, the document that you provided to us. I appreciate it, thank you. Okay. Switching over. All right, on to the, the town side of the budget. We have gone through all the departments and we've gone through the capital. So right now, we have one department that we have to approve that we haven't approved.
Yeah, we have the Human Resources Department and, you know, transfers out and you've discussed, you've discussed elements of that already, so we can summarize that when we, when we get to that.
Okay.
HR Department is on page eighty.
Eighty-one.
What is it?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, okay. Okay. All right, can I have a motion please to get this discussion on the table, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 132 in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Can you say that number again because my pen just, one forty-eight.
Seven-three-eight.
Seven-three-eight? Can I have a second? And we have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I did reduce the requested amount in the amount of thirty-three forty-two. This amount was, was going to be a step increase for the HR Director and I think that the Director's done a phenomenal job this year, but was discussing with the town manager that perhaps this should be done as an annual bonus and so that's why I reduced the, the amount of this department by that amount, but I thought that he could take that amount from another source.
Okay.
I know with the COVID work that she's been doing, Jacob was suggesting that maybe ARPA would be one, one that he should, he could take it from.
Uh-huh.
Is that, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just, when you say, would that be an annual, when you said annual bonus, is that every year or just next year?
This is for this, yeah.
It would just, you, the bonus would be a one-year bonus, it wouldn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I mean, generally, I, I, I would lean away from making that change, you know, I do think with the document, unless you don't believe the documentation or the narrative.
I do, I think that the Director's done a phenomenal job this year, I just think it should, that she should be rewarded in a different, a different way.
But you're not rewarding her in the same way.
No, it's not the same way, it's a different way, it's a bonus because she's had such a phenomenal year.
But, but a salary increase carries over year to year, the bonus would not.
Correct.
That's different.
Any other comments?
Jacob.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
That figure does include, still include a salary increase, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Just not the original salary increase to the position, so we're talking about a salary increase as well as a bonus this year.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify.
It would bring her, her salary up to the same amount, just in a different manner.
For one year.
Correct.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, just a question, so actually what we're doing is reducing then, or what the motion is doing, would do is reduce it by the three thousand three hundred and forty-two, just to confirm.
That's right.
Correct, thank you.
That's right. Any other comments or questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, motion carries. All right.
The capital items, do we want to go to capital budget?
Please, where are we on that with the book?
I believe it's early on in the, in the book, on page thirteen, fourteen is the list. The simpler list, I guess I should say, instead of the five-year one that has all the numbers in the back. And it's also on the next page. And you may want to take these and, you know, one for, one on the total gross for the government, you know, general government and a, and a separate one for the Board of Education unless you want to do them all together, you know, total number, whatever yours, you know, simpler for you.
Okay, so before we go there, we had talked about a few items last week which could potentially be delayed.
Yes.
And what that would do was that would decrease the amount from fund balance.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Because we only have like seven thousand dollars from, from our operating that's involved.
That's correct.
And so some of those, if we decide to do that, the same number could be used for some offset to the revenue that we're going to be using. Well.
Not what I.
Clear me up.
But yes, you could do that.
We could do that.
Yes.
All right, okay, so let's have some, before we make any motions, let's have some discussion about that up here so that we can understand where, where we are with this. Town manager had mentioned a couple of items last week, the accessory valve, data processing, computer upgrades, pickup truck and roadways, and a utility body with a plow in buildings and grounds.
Yeah, I did not, I did not mention the, the, the computer upgrades as, as an option.
Oh, okay.
One of them was.
My mistake.
Yeah, one of them was reducing from three cruisers to two cruisers, police cruisers, since there is also going to be an administrative vehicle purchase next year as recommended.
Oh, the cruisers, I'm sorry, I had marked the computer upgrades.
It was right near it.
My mistake.
It was right near it.
All right.
The other is, the roadways department, pickup truck and one of the buildings and grounds.
Utility with a plow?
Yes.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Robert, so if you reduce the cruisers by one-third, the outfitting would also be reduced, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is anybody interested in making some of those adjustments? I think if, if Robert feels these are reasonable and this will make some impact, we should go ahead and do that. Anybody else?
I, I agree with that.
All right, so can we, everybody, is everybody comfortable with doing that or not comfortable or how are you?
Madam Chair, just talk about if, because I, I get about eighty thousand dollars when you take those three items, I took a cruiser, the outfitting of a cruiser, I noticed the roadways department did mention their pickup truck could wait one more year.
Yep. And the four-wheel drive from buildings and grounds, did you include that?
Oh, yeah, so we have to add that in as well.
So do we have a total on that?
So that's like a hundred twenty-five thousand.
One twenty-four-five.
I got one, I got one seventy-four, so it, oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, don't carry the one.
I'm doing it.
One twenty-four?
One twenty, one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars with those four
items.
Right, I was changing the amount that should be charged rather than the amount subtracted, so sorry about that.
So my question is.
Go ahead.
We would reduce then our need for use of undesignated fund balance.
Yep.
So we're not really, and we would move that amount, I mean, I guess to the other line item for revenue, or are we not? Do you understand what I'm saying? What I'm confused about is if we reduce the capital budget by this amount.
Uh-huh.
And then we reduce the use of undesignated fund balance by that amount, technically that doesn't get us anywhere, or as far as the bottom line budget, it stays the same if we're eliminating the expenditure and the revenue, but if the revenue side, we're just putting in another area of our revenue line item, which would be just a generic use of undesignated fund balance, then we could reduce it by a hundred and, you know, whatever that turns out to be, what, like point zero eight mils or whatever it turns out to be?
Yes.
Is that, am I making sense? I know I'm, I'm trying to.
Well, I think the suggestion is that this would free up dollars that could be used on the general fund side for revenue to, to lower the, the, you know, the change in the mill rate and the, you know, the increase that some people will see.
And that's, okay, so that's my, my ultimate question is, is the plan to reduce the budget by point zero eight mils or is it to reduce the use of undesignated fund balance as well as remove these expenditures from the capital?
I would use it to offset some mill rate increase. That's what I would use it for.
Okay.
And Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I suppose when we were making a decision on that, we could do the whole amount or could do a portion of it. To.
Say it again.
Offsetting. We didn't, wouldn't necessarily try to offset by a hundred and twenty-four, we could.
Yep.
We could also decide a lesser number if that.
We could, we could decide a lesser number, we already have, we also have some reductions that the council made on the operating as we went through the other night. I think Rob sent us out, did, did everybody get a copy of that email, was it seventy thousand?
I think I only sent it to you unfortunately.
Seventy thou, so we already have seventy thousand in expenditure reduction and if we take some of this revenue, that would bring it up to almost two hundred, I guess, close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and just for clarification, tonight we would, we would reduce the capital expense by this one twenty-four-five, but as far as the revenue side of it, we would handle that when we set the mill rate.
Yes, yes, I mean, you could plan for it now.
Like tonight, we would just plan on voting to reduce the capital.
Reduce the capital.
Twenty-four-five.
Right, your budget tonight, your budget vote tonight is, is on the expenditure side.
Just the expenditure, okay.
Is everybody clear on what we're trying to do here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody understand that?
I'm okay reducing it by one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Get the number, Rob.
All right, so.
So the one nine oh three one would go to.
One seven seven eight six.
We trust you, but we're gonna, but we're gonna, but we're gonna verify.
That's okay.
One seven seven eight six hundred.
One seven seven.
Trust will verify.
That's just on the town, just on the town side CIP.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So let's have a motion, first of all, before we do a motion and all that, is everybody in agreement with what's been proposed? Are there any questions about what's going to happen here?
No.
Nope. No, all right. So then I will ask for a motion to approve our capital budget in the amount of?
Go ahead. Madam Chair, motion to approve capital budget in the amount of one million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Is there anything that we need to do in terms of the revenue that we're?
Before you do that, you have to flip the page and do the Board of Education amount, which is at three fifty-nine, two fifty. It's right on the back page of, of the one you had, page eighty.
Oh, three, oh, this one, right here.
Page fourteen.
Oh, okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education capital request, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the Board of Education capital request in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay.
Rob, can you summarize what we have to do with transfers out?
Yes.
So Rob's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna summarize the transfers out.
Okay.
Which is on. Is there a page on that or is it just?
There's a page, Department, Department eight forty, it should be right after employee, I don't have my book with me.
I'll give you a page.
It should be right after eight twenty, employee benefits. Eight thirty, unclassified.
I think? Two fifty-one maybe?
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
It's the last, it's probably the last one before the special, special fund section, that green page.
I don't know. I'm not sure, maybe two thousand.
You guys just want to talk about how much, where we're taking the funding from?
No, this is the actual Department eight forty, which is the tran, total transfers out for library, recreation, senior center, capital.
I'll give you, I'll give you the number.
Two thirty-eight? Yeah.
What is it?
Two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight.
Total inter-fund transfers out? Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So it should say inter, inter-fund transfers out, Department eight forty.
Yep.
Okay. So with what you've already done, you know, the recreation, library, senior center are now capital at, at seventy-eight hundred and fifty dollars. The bottom line for Department eight forty inter-fund transfers out is seven hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. Which is a reduction of fourteen thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars or minus one point nine zero percent.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department eight forty in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
It was sixty thousand, Rob?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So you have a total budget now for the general government? Kathy, Rob's going to give you the total line item for general government then? You did all the individual ones, he'll tell you what that adds up to.
So we need to approve, yep, okay.
The total general government budget.
Okay, with all the changes ever made, the total general government budget is twenty-four million, three hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars, which is an increase of seven hundred forty-six thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars or three point one six. Which is an increase of seven hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars or three point one six percent.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the general government, uh, budget in the amount of twenty-four million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You want the Board of Ed?
Board of Ed hasn't changed, right?
No, but I'll give you the number so you can-
Okay.
Excuse me, Board of Ed is forty-one million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. An increase of one million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars or three point seven two percent.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to fund, uh, the Board of Education in the amount of forty-one million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And just the total, total budget would be sixty-five million, six, sixty-five million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. An increase of two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars or three point five one percent.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So moved.
Have a second?
Am I allowed to do that? Five-second rule? He said the number.
We all good? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I think we're all set.
Yes, that's all the departments, all the, all the budgets we need to approve.
Would we be able to now just get a summary of what that does to the mill rate? You don't have to do it now, but just-
Yeah.
Well, I mean, with the assumption that you'd used a full one twenty-four five from capital reduction of unassigned fund balance and put into the general fund use of fund balance, okay. I'll have that to all of you tomorrow morning, if that's okay.
All right, that's fine.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All done? Okay, thanks very much. Thank you to the Board of Ed for coming tonight. Thanks, Rob and Robert.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. We'll begin with the pledge. Councilman Wazorka, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight. Um, we do have a public hearing, and I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given. The Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at seven P M. on Monday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, in the council chambers of the municipal center to hear public comment on the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following proposed projects. Purchase of VAC con vehicle, sidewalk installation, youth services counseling program improvements. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the seventeenth day of March, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Lee, uh, these are, if you can just give us a brief overview. I know that we've talked about these in previous council meetings. So if you just do a quick summary of some of the funding we're going to be talking about tonight.
Yes, there's three items. I will touch on the first one, and I have two staff people here to, to, uh, give brief presentations on the other two.
Great.
Regards to the purchase of the VAC con vehicle. We have two of those VAC con vehicles. They're relatively expensive pieces of equipment. They clean out catch basins, sewer lines, um, drainage systems when, you know, when necessary. And the trucks that we have are, are relatively old. Um, they've, they've been in the CIP Capital Improvement Plan for, for quite some time to be replaced. And, uh, and we're recommending that we purchase these vehicles, or at least this vehicle, through using the ARPA funds rather than do it through the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you.
Saving the local taxpayers some significant dollars. With regards to the sidewalk installation, John Bossi is here this evening. John, I, I know we, I believe we gave you some information in your package about that. But John, if you could just briefly talk about the study we did and, uh, why you're recommending this particular section and would, you know, a little bit more about the project.
You may recall if, or this may be new news to you, that, um, previously, the town, um, engaged the services of a computer company to do an evaluation of all our sidewalks. They, this particular computer pro, program, um, takes digital, took digital pictures of every single square of sidewalk. And then they use some kind of formula to determine the, the condition of each sidewalk slab. Um, the sidewalk sections that are included in this year's, or this program would be, uh, Maxine Road from Camp Street to Bel Air, no, not Bel Air, Bernice Court. And Bernice Court from Florence to, um, Maxine Road. The conditions of these sections of sidewalk were deemed, in the case of Bernice Court, were deemed, um, totally destroyed. I can't, I can't recall what the exact terminology was, but it, the sidewalk was basically non-existent. Um, it's, it was the only section of sidewalk in town that, um, was, was viewed in this classification.
Totally failed, I think.
Totally failed, okay, that's it, totally failed. In, in many sections, you'd, it'd be hard, you'd be hard to find the sidewalk. So, um, this, this was the worst section of sidewalk in town. Uh, the second section, um, was, uh, Maxine Road from Camp Street to, um, Bernice Court. This was one of probably ten or fifteen sections that were deemed very poor. Um, we picked that one because it connected with the totally failed section, so it was a complete project. Um, I believe we, I gave you an estimate in that memo. I think it's around, what, four hundred thousand dollars for the two sections?
Yes.
And, um, we're also going to include, um, that section of sidewalks that we started work last fall. But unfortunately, we needed to terminate the contract because the contractor was, um, ill-prepared to do the work. And that is the remainder of Laurel Court and Tomlinson Avenue from East Street to Laurel Court. That, that particular section will be paid for under the capital program like the other project was. And the Bernice, Bernice and Maxine Road will be paid for out of the ARPA funds if you would, if you agree.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay.
Roberta Brown, Youth Services Director, is here as well to speak about the Youth Services Counseling Program Improvements.
Hi there, wasn't really planning to speak, but anyway, I'm prepared. So, you know, you're probably all aware of, uh, the great increase in mental health needs of children, families, actually everyone, uh, since the pandemic. And, um, in youth services and in our town, um, we have seen the same increases as well. There was just an, uh, an article in the Hartford Current this past Sunday about a family, you know, searching for care and trying to get consistent care for her child. Uh, this is an article that was in the Current, um, in October. Connecticut faces an overwhelming coronavirus pandemic-induced crisis in pediatric mental health care. And then it goes on to talk about the things that we need to do. And what we need to do is provide more help, well, for one thing, provide more pediatric psychiatric beds, but that's not why I'm here. One of the things we need to do is help families here at home, here in their homes and in their schools and in their communities. And that's what I'm looking to do. By enhancing our ability to, um, we have a part-time position that we've had for many, many years. Um, it's currently a contracted position with the Connecticut Junior Republic, uh, the Wellness Center. We have a marvelous, um, youth and family therapist who's been working a couple of days, um, at the high school, a day at the middle school, and working with families all around, uh, beyond those school day hours. And, uh, we see families in our offices. It's not the absolute most private, um, space, however, we make the best of it. But we do have a large conference room in the back of the building that currently hasn't been used. Um, it's in dire need of, uh, repair. The ceiling tiles are falling apart. The rug is all ripped. It's, it's a, it's a pretty, it's not a very nice space. So anyway, we need to, uh, if we could take that space, renovate it, make a really comfortable place for children, families, counselors, small groups to, uh, to meet, it would be a great enhancement to our program. As well as adding some additional hours to that part-time position, so that's what this is about.
Thanks, Roberta.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we've heard from, uh, regarding the, uh, uses of this first proposed use. This is, this is our first-
Yes.
Use of the, um, the funding that we have got from the American Rescue Plan. So, uh, with that being said, I will open up, uh, the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing regarding any one of these, um, topics that we heard from tonight? Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing?
Hello. Cassandra Clark, thirty-nine Pierce Street, Plainville. So I know you guys are looking at sidewalks, and I know this isn't necessarily directly related to the plan you have. But, um, bus shelters, we only have one for the people utilizing the buses here in town. And I, um, had to use public transportation at one point because I, um, couldn't drive related to, um, an injury. And it was really difficult to use the public transportation and have to wait at bus stops that didn't have any shelters or stop, um, bus stop signs saying that this is the bus stop. So especially when you got to, um, where the mall or the stores are over by Kohl's and the movie theater. It's a high-traffic area and the busing shelter and that whole area. I know you aren't necessarily responsible for that public space there. But just to keep in mind that, um, the bus shelters, um, can be an excellent source of revenue as they do have potential for advertising. They offer, um, twenty-four-hour-a-day advertising opportunity. Um, and if located in high-traffic areas, are very effective in promoting events, services, and new products, et cetera. They not only provide shelter and safeguard for passengers from wind and rain, but, um, it also is aesthetically, can be really nice, too. Like I said, we do have the one in front of the library. But, um, I was just thinking that it could be a nice use to, uh, increase the experience for people using public transportation.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so? Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your contributions for that. Moving along, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes from the March seventh, twenty twenty-two regular meeting, March ninth, twenty twenty-two public hearing, March fourteenth and fifteenth and sixteenth special meetings.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements tonight for us?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I did attend my first regular meeting of the Housing Authority last week. And I'm, you know, still learning a lot about that, and there is a lot to learn. And the meeting was very informative. Just one announcement that they made is that they are going to be opening the waiting list again this spring, or June, I believe. Uh, but anyhow, was, I'm learning a lot about that, um, you know, the housing that we provide down there.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Anybody else have any announcements to make? I just have a couple of, um, notes to make about the Committee on Aging. I attended their March tenth meeting. Um, they are returning back to normal operation for the most part. The meals will be, meal service will begin in April. Um, there are still some Zoom classes being done. Let me see, there's still some to-go meals being prepared. And they're going to have a special downtown Abbey event where I guess the book club gets together and people dress up and they become the downtown Abbey, for those that are familiar. Um, also resuming are the outdoor adventure trips. Um, they're going to be going, and the book club, again, is going to be resuming some of their, um, activities. So the senior center is, um, back up to running pretty much for the most part. Everybody is, um, happy for that. Most of the activities are back to where they were pre-COVID. So we're, um, the, the Commission on Aging is very happy to see that all of those things are, um, resuming as they had hoped it would be. So they're, they're moving along. All right, there are no other reports. We'll move along. Appointments and resignations. Do we have anything tonight? Anything to add to this? We don't have anything listed? No? Okay. All right, Board of Education, do we have anybody for a report tonight? I see our chair is here. No report? Okay. Um, Board of the Town Attorney, Attorney Maestriani, do you have anything for us?
Good evening, I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay. All right, Report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee?
I'll try to make up for those two in the-
You sure will. You always do.
They are, they are. First item I have is, uh, spring bulk pickup. On-demand bulk pickup collection will begin on Monday, April eleventh. Residents can request one bulk pickup per year, free of charge, for acceptable large items that do not fit in the normal rubbish collection. Residents will be able to schedule their one bulk pickup free of charge either in the spring or fall. Spring collection will be from April eleventh until June twenty-seventh. That's the window of opportunity. However, during this period, bulk collection will not be available on April sixth, excuse me, April eighteenth, which is the day after Easter, or May thirtieth, which is Memorial Day. So those two weeks are excluded. And if you call CWPM, which is what we request that people do, that they contact CWPM directly, uh, you know, they will schedule you for a, uh, for a collection. Uh, their number is eight six oh seven nine three six seven two one. You need to provide your name, address, and phone number, along with a description of the items to be collected. Calls must be scheduled by, by the property owners or landlords, not renters. Calls placed by three P M. on Friday can be scheduled for collection the following Monday. Bulk items should be placed curbside no more than twenty-four hours before the scheduled pickup. Of course, everybody gets them out there earlier than that. We, we try to ask people to get them out maybe twenty-four hours in advance. Sometimes it's a little bit longer than that. Questions can be referred to the Public Works Administration, eight six oh seven nine three zero two two one, extension seven one seven six, by visiting the Public Works Department page on the Town of Plainville website at www.plainvillect.com. Next item I have is the transfer station opening. The transfer station located on Granger Lane will be open on Saturdays beginning April ninth. The hours of operation are eight A M. to three P M. Plainville residents must show identification, and there is a fee for disposal of most items. Items that can be disposed of without a fee include leaves, waste motor oil, antifreeze, mattresses, and electronic devices, including TVs and computers. Questions regarding the transfer station can also be referred to the Public Works Administration at that same phone number, which is eight six oh seven nine three zero two two one, extension seven one seven six, or by visiting the Public Works Department page on the Town of Plainville website at www.plainvillect.com. Would point out that that website has a lot of other information on there as well, which I think is of, should be of interest to, uh, citizens of the town. Next item I have is the road bond discussion. The seventh year of the road bond program is scheduled to begin next month in April. Town staff is requesting that the town council authorize the use of state-of-Connecticut contract for the purchase and installation of biotumulus concrete pavement, utilizing the state bid process in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is expected that TILCON will be the low bid in this area as a- It is expected that TILCON will be the low bid in this area, as they are from Plainville. There is an item on a new business regarding the recommendation, and while we don't have TILCON being officially noticed as the low bid, we expect them to be, and that's why we included that as part of the motion this evening, and for some reason they're not, we would not move forward without coming back to the town council. We're just trying to get that in place, so when the pavement plans opened up, we can do this in a timely fashion and get, get everything lined up with TILCON, try to plan it in advance. They're willing to take the risk as well, it won't be a wasted time. Next item I have is the Farmington Avenue Trees. Last year, the town council discussed the replacement of trees along Farmington Avenue that were removed by the state after being damaged by severe weather. Town staff is recommending the planting of 10 maples and/or red buds along the westerly side of Farmington Avenue from Robert Street to West Pine Way. Town staff solicited two quotes by local vendors. The low quote was submitted by Winterberry Gardens of Southington in the amount of $10,023.24. The trees would also be warranted for a year. As this tree replacement was not budgeted in the current fiscal year, town staff is seeking authorization to move forward with this work this spring. There is an item on a new business that would authorize the installation of 10 trees on the westerly side of Farmington Avenue from Winterberry, from Winterberry Gardens of Southington in the amount of $10,023.24. I would point out that town staff has contacted the residents who live along there that would have a tree in front of their house and made sure that they, you know, are receptive to those trees being replaced, and I believe that most if not all of the residents have been positive with regards to that. John's going to say something, so.
There are, there are nine homes that are affected by this project. Seven of them have agreed to allow us to plant trees.
Have you been in touch with the other two, or do they not want a tree?
I have not been in touch with the other two.
Okay, so it's possible that the other two
Possible that they may, may, I gave them to the 25th, which is Friday, to respond.
It's in the town right away, it's not on their property, but we'd like to give them the courtesy of letting them know that
Okay, and Robert, the funding comes from within, we have dollars available in this fiscal year to take care of that?
Probably would come out of other, you know, contingency unclassified, yes.
Okay.
Next item I have is a school administrator's contract. The Board of Education has recently approved a contract with the Plainville Association of School Administrators for three years, beginning on July 1, 2022, and ending on June 30, 2025. The contract was filed in the Town Clerk's Office on March 16, 2022. The Connecticut General Statutes allow for the town, for the town council, acting in its capacity as a legislative body, to reject the contract and send the negotiations into arbitration. The town council has 30 days from the filing of the contract to act, which is April 15, and the contract will automatically go into effect if no action is taken by the town council as well. Superintendent Steve LaPage is here this evening to give some highlights of the negotiated contract and to answer any questions that you may have concerning same. With your permission, I'd like to ask Superintendent LaPage to step forward and give a brief summary.
Noticed a dramatic pause on the word "brief." It will be brief, as, as was the negotiation, as Chairwoman Fuglese was involved and members of our Board of Education as well. It was a brief and cordial interaction with our administrators, and I will say that if I were to pick an A-team of administrators that I feel really strongly about having the best interests of kids all the time and doing an amazing job, this is an incredible administrative team, so they're great to work with, and I, and I think they came to the table very reasonable. Just to backtrack, we did a one-year extension on their original contract that we had agreed to the prior year. Because of everything that was going on with COVID, it was a very difficult time to negotiate. It was a flat 2% increase, no step increases. The insurance remained the same, which was 19% cost share on their part. For this new three-year contract, the major change, there were a couple of language changes regarding our 10-month position, or two 10-month positions for the assistant principals, just clearly defining their vacation in the summer, things like that. There were a little bit unclear previously, really no change to practice. So the biggest things came down to wages and cost share of insurance. So the wage increase over the, over the three years amounts to a 9.52% total increase, including step increases. Some of our administrators are newer, and we did allow the step increases for some of the years. So when you factor it all in, the actual increase for the first year, the gross wage increase was 2.5%, excuse me, 2% the first year, 2.5% the second year, and 1.5% the third year. And we're able to agree on that because of the step increases. When you factor in step increases moving up in the, in the salary scale, the total over three years is 9.52%, which averages about, about 3.17% per year. Their insurance cost share went from 19% this year, it's going to go up to 20% for the, for the next year, and then 20.5%, and then 21%. So it goes up a full percent, which is the largest salary increase the first year, so we did the largest insurance increase that year as well. So, so after three years, they'll be at a 21% cost share. The total cost of the entire administrative group of the increase is about $88,000 over the three-year time period in total for the, for the wages. I think that's pretty much, that's really the summary. It was, there wasn't much else negotiated, all the current language stayed in place, and just cleaned up some, some minor language points, but any questions at all?
I just have one quick question, Superintendent LaPage. How many people are in that group? Is it 15 or 16?
14.
14.
And I'm sorry, I'm incorrect with the total, it was $185,000. My, excuse, the total increase in, in wages, $73,076 the first year, $49,166 the second year, and $63,0714. That's, that correlates with the percentage increase each year, so I just wanted to make that correction, I apologize. I had it all memorized except for that one number.
It's a lot to remember.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for our superintendent regarding the contract? Okay, all right, I guess we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. I want to also thank you for all the support on the budget. I know there are a lot of good questions, I just wanted to, I didn't have a chance earlier in our session before this, but I do appreciate the town council. The Board of Ed did a great job, they, they put me through the wringer, and there was, there was a lot of, about eight hours of budget sessions, but I just wanted to say thank you for the town council's thorough review, good questions, and I mean, I'm glad I was able to answer those, and I appreciate the support. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item I have is COVID-19 update. Plainville continues to be in the yellow category with an average daily rate of 6.1 new cases of COVID-19 per 100,000 population over the last two weeks. Last week, there were four new cases of COVID reported in Plainville. All major events, centers, and large gathering places are now open for use with no restrictions such as face masks or vaccination requirements, except for certain healthcare settings and homeless shelters, and I believe there may be a school district or two that is still has a mask requirement, but it's not in Plainville. A recent article in the Hartford Current indicated that a subvariant of Omicron, namely BA.2, is gaining ground in Connecticut. It is predicted that BA.2 will compose 95% of the cases in southern Connecticut by early April, while BA.2 is thought to be more infectious than the original Omicron variant. It seems that as of yet, it is not as deadly or as disruptive to the healthcare system. Connecticut saw a slight uptick in the positivity rate last week to 2.53%, and hospitalizations are down, 40 patients last week to 100 overall. So things are still looking in a positive direction. As far as some happenings are concerned, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public workshop in support of the Plainville Housing Affordability Study on Tuesday, April 26. Still a ways off, that's, that's actually the day we vote on the town budget. The housing questionnaire/survey was closed out in late February. They will soon engage in the process of vetting ideas and strategies for affordable housing in Plainville. The plan is required by the states, by state statute. While it's not yet known what actions will be recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the workshop is an excellent opportunity to learn more and provide input to help shape this policy. So residents are invited to attend this Housing Affordability Study Workshop on April 26. There'll be more information forthcoming on that as well. The Plainville Anti-Racism Task Force is sponsoring. Plainville Unites: A Conversation About Diversity and Inclusion Here at Home, featuring speaking, featuring Speaker Somaya Dode on March 23 at 6:30 PM, that's this Wednesday, I believe, at the Plainville Public Library. This study is a Plainville resident of Pakistani descent, an alumna of Plainville schools, and will speak about her culture as well as her experiences with racism. For more information, contact Roberta Brown at 860-793-0221, extension 7404. Registration is encouraged at plainvillagect.com livery. The tax office will be sending out lien notices for the 2020 grant list unpaid real estate bills. And I know you mentioned earlier in the meeting with regards to the Senior Center, they have a, a couple of items. One of them is thanking Judy Humphrey for her, I guess she's having a retirement party on Thursday, April 14 at 10:00 AM. And Sean is asking to, to have people join her to thank Judy Humphrey for her 10 incredible years of organizing, leading, coordinating, planning, teaching, and facilitating the photography group. And, and it turns out that Judy has also written a book called Between Hearts, and at 11:00 AM, I guess after she's thanked for her years, actually, yeah, it's on the same day, April 14. She will be, she used the pandemic to write a book, and Judy, Judy will discuss her experience in writing and publishing on that date as well. So people are encouraged to put that on their calendar, I'm sure it'll be an interesting program. Last, but certainly not least, we, the town staff issued a news release, I'll read it. Plainville residents and business owners are invited to attend a welcome reception for the new police chief, Christopher Evangelie, on Wednesday, April 6. The reception will take place from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Plainville Public Library located at 56 East Main Street. The reception is an opportunity for citizens and business owners to meet and greet the new chief and, and give a show of support, and we'll also make sure that that makes its way out to social media and on the town website as well. So that's all I have to report this evening. Certainly
Okay.
We'll answer any questions or comments you may have from me.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding Robert's report tonight? Lots of information there, as always.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing? All right, moving along, we are in our public comment section. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to the microphone. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Anybody wish to speak? I'm not getting any takers tonight, so I am going to close the public comment section and move along. All right, on to new business.
Madam Chair.
I'm number one, go ahead.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the purpose, for the proposed projects. A, purchase of VACcon vehicle estimated cost $450,000. B, sidewalk installation estimated cost $410,000. And C, youth service counseling program improvements estimated cost $35,000.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I have number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2022-22B, biotumulus concrete pavement under state contract number 22PSX0008, the TILCON Connecticut Incorporated, New Britain, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $650,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the purchase of trees to plant on Farmington Avenue from Winterberry Gardens, Southington, Connecticut, quote dated November 2021, in the amount of $10,023.24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will say that I met a resident recently who lives there and was very happy about the trees being replanted, so people are pleased about that. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refund as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, takes care of new business. Other discussions of interest, Mr. Lee, do you have anything else you'd like to bring to us tonight?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, moving along. All right, so we are into, I need a motion to enter into executive session, please.
Madam Chair. Motion to move into executive session, union negotiations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, I don't believe we'll be coming out to take any action after that, so thank you very much. We'll close the meeting.